Good evening. I would like to call to order the July 3, 2018, meeting of the Stratford, Connecticut zoning Board of Appeals. My name is David DeCilio and as chairman, I'd like to take a moment to explain how tonight's hearing and meeting will proceed. The first part of the meeting will be a public hearing portion of our meeting, and one by one, we will read the petitions on our agenda into the record and then invite the petitioners and/or their representatives to present their requests. When your appeal comes up, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, hand in your proof of mailings, present your petition, and state your hardship. Please speak clearly and loudly into the microphone. The board may then engage in questioning the petitioner about their requests and their hardship. After the questioning has concluded, I will ask the public if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition of the petition. It is important that anyone who speaks publicly address the board and identify themselves by name and address for the record. The second part of our meeting will be the administrative session where the board will discuss and act on petitions. During the administrative session, we do not allow public input or comment. And before we begin, I would like to request that all in attendance turn your phones onto silent. If your phone should ring by accident during the hearing, you'll be stated, asked to come up and sing for us. And tonight's song is "I've Got You, Babe" by Sonny and Cher. Mr. Tavares, would you please read item number one?
Absolutely. 271 Prospect Drive Petition of Kim Lynn Seeking A Waiver Of The Side Setback At Maximum Height To Expand A Non-Conforming Accessory Structure Incidental To A Single-Family Dwelling. The hardship being odd-shaped pre-existing lot needs additional space and height for vehicle and storage.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Michael Buterle. I'm a licensed land surveyor and licensed professional engineer here in the state of Connecticut. And with me is Kim Lynn, the owner of the property. I'll present to you the mailings.
Along with the plans that you have, and it should also be an inset that should empty the garage. Along with that, there's an architectural plan in my certified plot plan.
Mr. Buterle, if you can just address the microphone, thank you for the record.
What I'd also like to present to the commission is an exhibit. When I talked to Jay from your staff, he wanted me to add on a proposed masonry wall. As you face the garage from the street, off to the right of the front of the garage, there's a, there's a low masonry wall. I considered that a fence, and I didn't show it on the plan that's in your package. But I do have plans here that show it. So as an exhibit, I'd like to present it to the commission. And again, that's, that's the only difference in the plan. That's in your package. It's, it's just that proposed wall. The existing house is a cape, existing cape, built in 1950. 1952, the garage and a shed behind, on the right side of the, of the house was built. And again, if you bring your attention to this eight and a half by 11 inset, it shows the existing shed behind the garage, there's a distance of just under two feet. It was 1.9 feet from the property line. The back right-hand corner of the existing garage is existing one foot off the property line. The shed is proposed to be removed and a new structure built, and that will be over the three feet that's required for an accessory building. So we don't need a waiver on, on the shed behind the garage. What we'd like to do on the garage, it's, it's a plain masonry block garage, again, built in 52, we'd like to dress it up as the same type of brick that's on the house now, and, and putting a coarser brick down the right side, it would bring it closer than the one foot existing. It would be 0.6 feet. So we're, we're asking for a waiver for that back right-hand corner from the property line. Kim's husband is a masonry contractor, and the reason we'd like to get it, the building higher is so he can put his work truck in with the racks and get it out of the driveway and away from the neighbor's view. Of the neighbors' letters that you have, they were all sent letters, two made comments on their letters that they had no objection. One is the one behind us at 205 Maple Street. They mentioned on their, on that letter that you have now, they have no objection. And the people behind us to the right at 206 Margarita Lawn had no objection. So again, it's, we'd like to put a coarser brick on the existing garage to dress it up to match the house, to get away from that 1950's old block, cement block look. And again, because her husband is a masonry contractor, he'd like to be able to pull the truck in with the racks on top and close the garage door away from sight. Questions?
Mr. Hoyde?
Yeah, I have a couple. I have one of Jay, too. But in regards to the garage doors, the existing doors now are 7'2" in height from what it shows. Correct?
Yes.
And what you're proposing is a, a curved top door that will be eight feet six? Is that correct?
Eight and a half feet. That's correct.
So that awning part, that, that curved part and everything else is retractable and it goes in?
Yes.
And as the garage door opens?
Yes. And what, what they propose to do is leave the line of the roof as it, as it is. And we're going to cut the roof at the sill and jack up the roof. So the roof line will be exactly the same. So it'll, it'll be jacked up a couple of feet.
Thank you.
So the roof, the roof won't be reconstructed. It'll be that same structure. We're going to cut it away from the walls, jack it up, and build the walls up.
Right. And Jay, I have a question on the existing garage now. That right corner or the eastern, northeastern corner, that, that's non-conforming now, correct?
Uh, which?
On, on the existing garage now?
The northeastern corner where there, there's that little, I think I call it a um...
Yeah, it...
Tear, no, not a teardrop.
The one foot?
That's existing non-conforming since 52.
Is that's pre-existing?
Yes.
Yes.
So that was, that was allowed when the garage was originally built?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Hoyde?
Yeah, I do have another question. In your description of what you're going to do, Jay is noting that even though it's a irregular lot, it's, it's still a conforming lot. What type of hardship, other than you need a higher garage to park the vehicles? What kind of hardship can you give us that we could use as a valid reason?
Our opinion was, it was an odd shot, it was odd-shaped lot. It's, it's on, it's a corner lot, so there's two fronts, two sides. And built back in 52, it was allowed to put the garage one foot away from the property line. And not only that, the person whose property is adjacent to that closest point, that part that we're trying to get the waiver for, she mentioned in her letter that she had no objection.
Okay, thank you.
And height is, is subjective. I mean, it's, again, the people that live there had no objection. And it's just that, rather than keep a work truck out, like I say, he's a masonry contractor. He's been since he was a young man. I've known him for a long time. Okay.
Okay, and am I to understand the one-foot current existing setback is going to six-tenths of a foot, which is the width of a brick?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you're basically just...
And again, the brick is to dress the, dress the garage up so the neighbor doesn't have to look at that.
I've driven by the property. It's, the work to date is admirable.
Oh, well, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this petition?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tom Canterbury. I live at 246 Margarita Lawn. I'm here with my wife, Vicki, today. Our backyard looks over the property. And, you know, we did, we just object to the, the building a commercial garage essentially in our backyard. You know, I, I've got a couple of photos showing what the backyard has looked like for the last couple of years with all the junk that's been piled up against our property line, which we have asked to be cleaned up. And I would, I would like it cleaned up, but I don't think that justifies expanding the size of the garage, which is already a non-conforming structure. The courts have consistently held that a personal preference disappointed by the zoning regulations does not justify a hardship exemption. I refer to Berkman versus Board of Appeals, 1949 case, that's Connecticut Supreme Court, which holds that disappointment in the use of property can hardly constitute a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. The owners have greatly added to the property since they, they moved into it. The, the size of the lot was known when they moved into it. It hasn't changed. The zoning regulations haven't changed. Section 21 of the zoning regulations require a finding, a special circumstances that create a hardship for the particular parcel. And a bigger garage, I, I think is not a specific hardship to this property. And the hardship was there when they bought the property, which is another factor for the zoning Board of Appeals to consider. When an applicant buys a property aware of the zoning regulation and later files for a variance, the courts have held that that is not a hardship other than one of their own making. And the application that the zoning Board of Appeals puts out makes it clear that there's a high hurdle to obtain a variance. There must be exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship, which the courts have strictly interpreted. It also notes that the financial consideration of the owner is, is rarely a valid reason for a variance. And even when a proposed use is beneficial or not detrimental to the neighborhood, that alone is not deficient. The hardship must ride from, must arise from operations of the regulations on the land, not the landowner, and must be particularly disadvantaged by the regulations which a variance is sought. And, you know, we don't think that that exists in this case. And just on the notice issue, the people at 216 Margarita Lawn just sold their house and the new owners are there. And I don't know if the new owners were the ones that had notice or not, but their property is one that backs right up against where this garage is going to be. So I would just make sure that they have a chance to be heard if they're not the ones that were notified.
Mr. Canterbury, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
And thank you for your input. There's two components to this application. One is seeking a waiver to side the garage in brick, which brings the garage technically a couple of inches closer to the property line that you share. And the second one is height. Do you oppose both? Do you oppose one?
We oppose the height. The, the encroachment on the other property is not our, I don't believe is our property line. It's the house next door.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tavares, I did not see you.
Thank you. I gotta get used to this, too. Sir, is the only other complaint you have is the, the material that's in the yard?
Well, and I didn't know what the reason for the variance was. And it, I mean, they, they make it clear it's a commercial reason to store the truck in their, their masonry equipment. You know, and we're, we're a residential neighborhood and put in a, a bigger garage to, to store commercial equipment just seems out of place for the neighborhood.
Can I ask the homeowner a question? Ms. Lynn? Could you guarantee that if we approve this structure, that all of that debris will be stored in the garage and that...
Yes, absolutely. All the debris will be off. We'd like to landscape it. I think you've, you've viewed the property. You saw the landscaping. We want to be able to clean all that equipment up and store it. We're not looking to enlarge the garage or store any kind of commercial equipment there. It's day-to-day planks, a few scaffolding and some ladders that we're not able to get in there due to the current height and get our vehicles in. That side yard will look beautiful when it's done. There'll be not one piece of equipment out there or a tool.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just in response, we, we've asked on numerous occasions that the mess that's in our backyard be cleaned up, and it's been there for a year. So I, I know, maybe that's, maybe that's the reason, because I haven't been able to get the garage approved. But it's been a problem, an ongoing problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Please. They have done beautiful work.
I'm sorry, name, name and address?
My name is Ann Canterbury. I'm also at 246 Margarita Lawn. And we've been looking at their trucks and their ladders and their wrought iron things. And it's in my backyard. And my tree has died. So I'm really looking at it from my dining room table. And when they are asking for this to increase and put in essentially a commercial garage, because right now for their cape, the garage that's there is, you know, a fine size. It kind of goes. They're asking for saying that it's a legal hardship, this is not a legal hardship, to get a larger garage to fit a truck. This will be a variance that will be running with the land. So who, what she says is going to happen might not be when they flip this house, whether, who moves in there and what they're going to be doing with now a very large additional structure. So if you're going to be granting this, let's have some conditions put on that variance as to no commercial vehicles in there. Let's not start having this rented out to people, you know, whatever. Let's make sure that this stays a residential area. I don't know if I can submit that. Here's what I... And as I said, they have done beautiful work, except for what we look at. And our, our neighbors that moved in, that moved out is Kate and Oliver. So I don't know who's at, at that address that they've notified at this point. They moved in like last weekend.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, does the board have any other, I guess I'll entertain a motion to close. Oh, is there any, excuse me, is there anybody else to hear to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close. Mr. Hoyde?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tavares. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoyde, would you please read in the next item on our agenda?
Absolutely. Second item under new item, 94 Houstonic Avenue, petition of James T. Ruiz, seeking waivers of the side setback, building coverage, and minimum distance from a coastal resource to construct a rear second-story deck incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS4 zone. Their hardship is stated as an undersized lot.
Good evening. My name's James Ross. I own the property at 94 Houstonic. I'm asking for a very, several variances to put a second-story deck on. Back in October, we had a windstorm and it ripped off the existing railing that we had. And so now I have French doors that fall down a story, and I need to do something about it. And I'd like to put a deck up.
He's submitting them, yes.
So essentially, everything on my property is out of spec for the zone that it's in. It's 6,500 square feet. It's a 7,500 square foot zone. If you look at the, the data that is shown right now, one of the variances on the side yard, it's 10 feet for the zoning requirement. I currently have 3.8 in that side. My house is 3.8 from the, the property line. This new upper deck would be 7.7 feet and in line with the deck that's on the first floor. That's already pre-existing. The other variance is building coverage. I'm a little confused on this one. I, I read what the regulations state, and it does list a deck as a coverage item. This increases it by 1%. But this is a deck that pretty much is over a deck that's already existing, and it's over a Bilco door that's attached to the structure and a slab. So I'm a little confused as to why that would be additional coverage when I already have coverage on the first floor. So I, I guess the way I looked at it is if I was putting a two-story addition on, would both floors be counted in coverage? So, and the other variance is the coastal resource. Currently, the requirement is 75 feet. My existing deck, deck is 52 feet from that particular requirement. And the upper deck would be 67 feet. So it would be even closer away from, or further away from the coastal resource.
Do any members of the board have any questions for this applicant? Ms. Streets?
You said that a railing was damaged during the last storm?
Yes, it, it...
Why wouldn't you just replace that railing rather than put on a new deck?
Well, because it fell down and it's dangerous.
Replace, why wouldn't you replace it?
Well, for the same reason, because that area is very windy and it pulled the deck off. It was a glass, it was a glass railing, a French rail. And there's two things that were an issue with it. One, it was like a sail. So it gets very windy where we are. And it basically kept vibrating the glass. Eventually, it fell. Could have fallen on people. So that, that's an issue, not for me, not to replace it. I mean, I have a young child and I have pets, and I'd be concerned. You know, luckily, it fell down at night. It could have been during the day. Could have been people on the deck. Glass went everywhere. So from a safety standpoint, I would not want to do that again.
Okay. I have another question. On your application, you say that you've not filed any previous petition, but I've noticed in the discussion that you've, that three petitions for variances have been filed.
That wasn't me. I never filed a petition.
You did not file them? None of them?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ross, we had a question before that you weren't sure about. Do you want to present that question?
Well, I kind of elaborated a little bit on the issue as to whether or not this truly is additional coverage, because there's already a structure beneath it. And so does that, based on what I read in the regulation, it says decks. But did they assume when they wrote the regulation that there'd be a deck over a deck? So that was my question on the coverage. Is it truly additional when I already have coverage?
Mr. Baske, you want to answer that?
I can't get inside the mind of the person who wrote this regulation 50 years ago. Just by looking at your plans, so is the deck 100% stacked up with the one below? Because by looking at the plans, it looks like it overlaps outside of that slate.
It goes outside, but there's a Bilco door, which is also considered, I thought, a coverage structure.
But it goes past the Bilco door as well.
It goes right to the end of it. That's where it's going to end.
On your plan, it shows it going over, just so you know. At least, at least for what, what we were reviewing. So, you know, how that gets calculated, are we calculating one foot? You know, we don't know. Just by looking at it, it doesn't look like it's stacked exactly over the deck the way that you, you mentioned, or maybe I wasn't listening. But it looks like you are going outside of the existing footprint.
Of the deck, yes.
Correct.
But the other structure would be the Bilco door, which also would be considered a coverage structure, wouldn't it?
But you're outside of that as well.
By a foot?
But you're outside of it. That's what I'm saying. It's not, you are expanding your footprint, just, just to be clear. And, and I don't know what staff, who you, who you'd spoken to about, about that. And I assume that you just spoke to someone in our office. But it's also indicated on your plans that the, that the variance is, is required for the, the coverage. I'm not sure if that was on your surveyors.
The supervisor did that. And I, I... And I talked to him about it. And he sent me the zoning regulations. And that's pretty much what I was just talking about.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? I actually have one myself. I, I'm not exactly clear on the answer you gave, Ms. Streets, regarding what pre-existed. You said a glass. I'm assuming, because I saw your photographs, that there's a double door. How far out did the, whatever was there protrude before this glass wall?
Probably.
Like enough to walk, a couple feet, three feet?
No, six inches.
So you had a double door?
Yes.
With six inches of glass outside of it?
Yeah, about this high.
Interesting. And you purchased the home that way or constructed it that way?
No, that's how I purchased it.
Okay.
And I have extra, there's other doors like that that open to nowhere.
Okay. Okay, I think that satisfies my understanding of what pre-existed prior to it collapsing. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Please approach the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening. Frank LaSella, I'm his direct neighbor. This will actually be looking right over my yard. All the properties on this, that end of that street are very tight. And we all seem to be on top of each other's. And I have no objection at all. I thought it was ridiculous when the thing was built and they didn't let him come. He has doors that go nowhere. They said it was a coverage issue. And, you know, he does have a two-car garage. But like he said, there is stuff underneath already. So you get double the coverage because it's on top of it. And I, like I said, although this will be looking right into my yard, I have no objection whatsoever. I feel, you know, where we are, taxes we're paying over there, you should be able to get the most you can out of your property. And so I have no, and I'm actually the only neighbor next door as a yacht club that, that will be, it'll be touching.
Can you state your address for the record? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's 102 Houstonic. I've been there for over 31 years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to close. Mr. Tavares, motion to close, seconded by Mr. Hoydic. All in favor? Signified by aye. Aye. Opposed, carried unanimously. Now I need a, I'm sorry? Thank you very much. Motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Hoydic, seconded by?
Second. Second.
Mr. Tavares. In discussion, all in favor by saying aye? Aye. Carried unanimously. Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Okay, going into administrative session. Would someone be interested in taking item number one? Up for discussion? Do we need a motion to take? Making, looking for a motion to take item number one, 271 Prospect Drive, off the table by Mr. Hoydic?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tavares. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's now up for discussion and deliberation.
I just want to hear the input from the other commissioners basically on this one. I, I have, my, my concerns are, when I saw the prints and the description of what they wanted to use the garage for, that it could become a commercial type issue. And then when the budding neighbor shows us the debris that's scattered around the yard, it kind of confirms my concern. And also, I really don't think that there's a valid hardship in this case because there really isn't. Not in my mind. And you have a, an abutter that is questioning the hardship. And if we approve it, it's going to be appealed. I just, that's my thinking on it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's very valuable input.
I share Mr. Hoydic's concern about what appears to be a lovely residential area potentially having commercial vehicles and things like that in it. And when I saw this photograph, that just kind of raised my concerns even more. I don't know what kind of assurances that we could really get that the petitioner would not, you know, essentially turn it into someplace for the storage of commercial vehicles and that they would clean this up. Their neighbor said they asked them a year ago to clean it up and it's still here. So that's, that's my concern.
I just want, I would like to clarify for the commission that, to let you folks know, one commercial vehicle is permitted in a residential zone for, it's, this is not headquarters for a landscape, or I'm sorry, contractor storage yard, no materials. But someone is allowed to take their truck home and, and keep it one on their property. Just to make that clear.
I'm aware of that. I have a neighbor who has a commercial truck and he's, he's very responsible with it. I guess the additional photograph with what appears to be debris from commercial work is, you know, kind of heightens my concern.
Mr. Tavares?
I share the concerns of my colleagues here, which did a site review of the property. And it looks like, should we approve this, that it's going to look unlike any commercial garage. It's got some nice fascia on it. And again, my question to the folks that were in opposition was that if the owner does clean up this debris and doesn't make it look like a commercial property, that from what I got, would be, would be acceptable. My response to having any prior complaints about the property could have been, there's other means of, of addressing those situations. If you approach the person and they don't clean it up, you know, we, we do have departments in the town that would definitely enforce that. And I hope I'm not going out on a limb with anything illegal about it. But, you know, when it comes to situations such as blight, and of course, I have the same sentiment as far as what properties look like. I'm very, very stringent about where I live and how people take care of their property. So if we should approve this with the fact that it doesn't look like there's a hardship, but if they do make use of expanding that garage, and if it would take care of this material and clear it off the property, I, I would be in favor.
Ms. Anderson, do you have thoughts on this?
I have, my question is, if the garage isn't going to be any bigger, other than height, how is that going to take care of the debris? For me, it's like, if, if you already have a garage, why isn't this stored? And if all you're going to do is add height so you can put in a tall truck, I'm not sure that that garage is going to take care of the debris. And, you know, I'm not sure about adding, moving closer and adding height in a, in a small neighborhood. I have concerns about that.
So I drove by the property and I, I think the applicant has done an unbelievable job with the property. It looks beautiful and the garage is unfinished and they're here because they want to finish the project. I have absolutely no problem with the fact that they're going to face it in brick and they're looking for a couple of an inch waiver on side yard, which is part of this application. And I would fully support that. I, like several of my colleagues on the board, do not understand the relationship between an irregular lot shape and the height of the garage. There's clearly no hardship for that request. As much as it may make sense to do that, I, I can't tie it to that together in my mind unless someone here can help me do that. So that's all I have to say. As chair, I will entertain a motion to... Do what you will.
Is this motion to vote to approve?
So I have a motion to approve in full? In part? Or just a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Mr. Tavares, is there a second? Okay, we have a second on a motion to approve. I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Ms. Streets?
No.
Aye, Chairman DiCilio, vote no. And Mr. Hoydic?
No.
So the motion to approve fails four to one. Okay, may I entertain a motion to take 90, item number two, 94 Houstonic Avenue, off the table? Motion by Ms. Streets, seconded by Mr. Hoydic. Okay, for discussion, 94 Houstonic. Mr. Hoydic?
Yeah, I, I really don't have a problem with this application. But I, I do concur with Jay on the lot itself. It's mainly almost all impervious. I'd like to ask the applicant to find a way to, to make a grass area or, like Jay suggested, a gravel type area part of the driveway. There's just so much runoff that comes off the building, off the deck, off the patio. It's, it's a concern for me. And I don't know how I would put that into a condition if I was willing to approve. Do you have any suggestions, Jay?
Well, as a condition, you could certainly require that the entire driveway. It's going to be tough to do portions of it. But to require the driveway be constructed of impervious material to be approved by the town engineer. That could include pavers that have grass that grow through it. It could be just pavers. It could be stone. There's a lot of different options.
See, I don't know how he has the leaders in the building, if he has it in drywall, drywells, or if it's tied into the source system, or anything like that. It's just, there's just a lot of area that, what, what ground there is, it's difficult for it to collect. I mean, I drove all the way around the house. I know the boatyard is right next to it. But you are in a coastal management area, even though it doesn't apply to this.
Mr. Hoydic, may I make a suggestion? Your, with your concern, it could be a condition that, in granting the waiver, that gutters and leaders are to be put into underground storage, underground retention, or whatever it is, leaching, coltex, or whatever they call it, to satisfy the town engineer as a condition of approval. Then the applicant can decide whether the deck's more important, if it's a valid, important deck, they just go to the added expense of...
I guess we could refer to the town engineer on the amount of water that's collected on the property.
Yeah, just to have the lead...
That if it's not necessary by his standard, then it doesn't have to be conditioned. But I'd like to have someone review it, at least. And I don't think that's asking too much of the applicant.
Excuse me one moment. Jay, do we have the liberty since 65 days to act on this to get input for the next meeting? Even though we don't have an August meeting, so from now until September? From town engineer?
I would say we probably do. With that being said, there would be another option to leave it to the discretion of the town engineer. If, if the town engineer, it was, we can say as a condition of approval, the board is going to require that a review of how the stormwater is being treated from the downspouts. And if the town engineer feels that supplemental galleys be installed underground, then we're going to, the board will give him that latitude to require that. And I would word that in a, a little bit clearer. That was just off the top of my head. But if, if the board...
That's, that's the thought that I have.
And we certainly have the right to be able to do that. But if you feel that you would rather have the town engineer do a more formal review ahead of time, that's also within your purview.
Mr. Tavares?
I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of safety. Extending that deck going across, I look at the doors and the first thing I'm thinking about is children or any other persons around that area. Also, for the future, should a house come under another ownership of, you know, we're talking about families, that extending that deck, I think, would certainly ease my mind as far as access, egress, and safety. And so I would, I would look to approve of that simply because of, again, it just doesn't, you know, that just, that just bothers me to have those doors like that and, and nothing to, you know, to support it as far as entrance and exits. That's it.
Ms. Anderson?
I agree. I'm, I'm concerned about those doors also. And I don't see a problem with putting a deck on top of a deck since you're not talking about expanding the footprint. I do, I do understand the concern about the runoff. And I would have no problem approving with the condition that an engineer looked at it and based on their decision, there was a recommendation from them.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would agree with the previous comments. I think that safety is tantamount. It's very important, particularly if there are children there. But I am also concerned about the environmental impact of what's being done and what's proposed to be done. And if the town engineer could give us some guidance on that, I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you. I also feel like you do, Mr. Hoydic. In looking at the survey, it's clear that there's an awful lot going on on this lot, from above-ground pools to sheds to walkways to decks, to moored decks, to side yards, to cantilevers, to, I mean, it's lovely property, but there's, there's a lot. And, and to speak with Mr. Hibansky's, to his notes, it said, "At what point does the board determine that the development of an undersized parcel of land is too intense to continue granting variances?" Because there are many already granted on this property. So I think it is absolutely appropriate for the, the drainage situation to be addressed in a motion. And I would be in support of approving this application with that condition, should there be a motion. That being said, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, then I'll make a motion to approve application, what was the number? 94 Houstonic Avenue. With the conditions, well, stating, like my colleague said, for safety in terms of the deck itself and the structure that's going to be added. And also a condition that, as just discussed, that it's... that it's reviewed by the town engineer's department in terms of the amount of impervious area that's there now and that with the additional deck that's going to be put on will impact the lot itself. And depending on what his findings are, that the application would not be granted until his, whatever his input is and decision is satisfied. All right, Jay?
So I would say, as a condition, the applicant should- shall adhere to any recommendations made by the town attorney to improve stormwater management on the site.
Town engineer.
What did I say?
You say attorney.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, I got it.
Sorry. Prior to the issuance of any permits.
Okay, do I- we have a motion to approve by Mr. Hoydic. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tavares. Is there any additional discussion? I will take a roll call vote on the motion to approve subject to conditions. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Mr. Hoydic?
Yes.
And the chair, Mr. DiCilio, votes yes. Passes five zero. Congratulations. Next on our agenda, I have item number three, approval of the minutes of June 5th's meeting. And I'd like to, before we hear or consider a motion, there was one small typo. Under petition two on page one, it said 104 Ride Road, and it should be 104 Ridge Road. We didn't catch that until it went out. So with that correction, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Streets.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tavares. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, carried unanimously. Okay, CAM site review.
We have no new CAM applications to review.
Okay. Item number five, members' concerns and comments. Mr. Hoydic?
Yeah, I have a member, a concern, and, you know, I don't know how Jay would address it, but concerning Prospect Drive. Could that property be monitored by John Rusaski or Mr. Fedett? Just to make sure it doesn't get any worse than it is or that it gets cleared up a little bit? Because it's a residential area. I mean, I drove all around that property. That's my request.
Absolutely. We'll have the zoning enforcement officer take a peek at the property, make sure that it's maintaining its residential character and adhering to all the regulations that, you know, home occupations are required to follow. And we'll also refer to the anti-blight department as well.
Any other members of concerns or comments? Seeing none, I would say it's any other ideas?
I think that would be a good time to talk about what we talked about this afternoon.
I think Mr. Hibansky is going to address that with you as acting as chairman and decision-maker relative to the Alvarez appeal and court findings. I have recused myself from this matter because I have a conflict of interest that arose several months ago relating to the case. So Mr. Hibansky is going to be addressing that with the rest of the board.
And I can just give you just a quick overview. I think everyone should have seen the memorandum of decision that came back from Judge Radcliffe. That was included for your review. So that application will be coming back to the board at some point, most likely for a special meeting in August. I know we all enjoy our August ZBA off, but we might be having to get together for a meeting. We're not 100% sure what mechanism this application will be coming back, whether it's going to be an administrative meeting and we'll just be discussing it in this format here, or a full public hearing. And that's something that, as Chairman DiCilio is going to be recusing himself. I'm going to have a conversation with Vice Chair Tavares and determine the course of action of how we want this application to come back.
Absolutely.
So I'll reach out to Vice Chair Tavares after the holiday and see if we can set up time to, you know, kind of set a course of action.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, concerns, new business? Invitations to the chair to come over for the Fourth of July for a hot dog? Not seeing none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Tavares, seconded by Mr. Hoydic. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. Have a good Fourth of July.
You too, thank you.
I'm department head, right?